We will call our meeting to order. Renata, if we could have the roll call, please.
Sure. Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Edinger?
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Gookin?
Here.
I just wanted to quickly mention that if Councilman Edinger is watching on TV tonight, I want to have him get well soon. I need help in managing this crew up here, so hurry back, Ron. So we will have the invocation tonight from Pastor Paul P. Buddy from the Grace Bible Church.
Our Father and our God, the purpose of our meeting tonight is decisions. And Lord, when we have decisions, we need wisdom. We thank you that you are the God of wisdom and that you can give wisdom to these men and women who are called here tonight to make these decisions. Lord, we pray that you'll especially give them wisdom as they listen to any public comments, that they would be able to understand clearly what's being communicated and know what to do with it at a future time. Thank you, Father, for being here and guiding us tonight. In the name of Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Steve, please, in the pledge, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight? Yes, Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend item F4 on the consent calendar, which is the setting of a public hearing for proposed new fees and processing boundary line adjustments Mill River Lift Station. We'd like to remove the word "and" and just continue it with adoption of the 2014 Idaho Fire Service Organization rate book, and then add "and to adopt fees for firefighter equipment rooms to be held on June 17, 2014."
Okay.
That's the motion.
That is the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go on to the public comment section. It's a chance for anyone to come up. They have three minutes to give public comment in regards to any city business, so we would like to call up anyone that would wish to give public comment at this time.
I just have something real quick. Mayor and council, this week is EMS week, and the chief of the EMS system in Cootney County had some memorial coins put together, and he'd like each one of you to have one for, you know, your dedication to the EMS system and our support throughout the whole county. And so if I could, I'd hand one out to each of you. You got approach?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh huh. And then there's just a little explanation of what the coins are actually for. They're, they basically started back in the 40s during the military times. And, thank you.
Very cool.
So again, that's just in support of EMS, and we thank you for your support, and we'll continue to do our job the best of our ability. You have any questions for us?
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Betty.
My name is Betty Strong, and I live at 100 East Coeur d'Alene Avenue in Coeur d'Alene. Mayor Widmire and members of the City Council, I'm here tonight to tell you of a problem that I have observed at Forest Cemetery, and I hope that you will pay attention to. I don't know if you are familiar, but the fence that runs on the north side of Forest Cemetery from Government Way to Lincoln Way is in sad disrepair. It is falling over in some places, not completely over, but leaning. And if you would take a look at it, if you either drive on Short Street through Government Way to Lincoln Way, or if you walk that way, you will see what disrepair that fence is in. Last summer, a portion of a new fence that matched the fence on Government Way was installed, and so I was encouraged. And so this year, I called the new Department of Forests, of Cemeteries and Parks, Mr. Greenwood, and I asked him if the fence was going to be continued to be fixed this summer. And he told me that the City Council, in their budget, has only $15,000 a year for capital improvements at Forest Cemetery, and that it would be three years before this fence could be completed to Lincoln Way. And I wonder if you realize how much a lot costs in Forest Cemetery. For example, a lot that has a flat monument costs $800. And it, and a lot that has an upright monument costs $1,000, $1,050. And the cost for opening and closing the graves ranges from $550 to $650. And as you have observed, there are many cremains sections that are scattered throughout Forest Cemetery. And I don't know if you know, but a cremain section costs $800, and $300 for opening and closing. So I think a proper fence would not be too much to ask. I have six relatives buried there, and I will soon join them. I have always had a special interest in the cemeteries because Mayor Don Johnston appointed me to the first cemetery board, and I started the Avenue of Flags. And so I have a special interest in the cemetery. With beautiful McEwen Park, improvements in Centennial Trail, the beautiful parks and playgrounds that we have in Coeur d'Alene, I don't, I'm sure that the City Council can find some money within their budget to finish that fence this summer. That hallowed ground deserves more. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. And we will definitely-
Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Betty?
I don't have a question for Betty. I do have a question for Troy.
Pardon?
I do have a question for our finance director, who's been looking through the budget even as you were speaking. Troy, is there, I know that Betty was talking about a budget item for maintenance on the fence, or, no, it was a, what was it?
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements. Do we have maintenance in there?
He told me it was $15,000 a year. Is that correct?
Do we have maintenance in there also?
Betty is correct for the multiple questions going here.
Sorry.
And the maintenance on the fence, what our plan has been, and you heard good information, City of Coeur d'Alene went forward with the Government Way improvements on that fence. We spent $113,804.71 approximately in 2010. And what we're finding is that we can do a couple hundred feet of fence, buy the fence materials wholesale, use our labor to put it in, which we believe saves 40 to 50% of the cost, and we're going to do it over a multi-year program so that those aesthetics come along. This is the second year of the multi-years, and in fact, we met on this subject today in our budget meetings, and we're going to appropriate another $15,000 to get some more fence done in the next year. So that has been the plan that we've been working on in order to enhance that property.
Don't you think it's rather absurd that it's going to take three years to finish that fence? I do.
Ron, I think we probably-
Thank you.
-will study that, but I appreciate the information, Betty. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay. We will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of the consent calendar, including Resolution 14-018 and Resolution 14-019, with addition to what Dan added on there.
Amendment.
Which one is that?
Just the setting of the hearing.
Oh, setting a public hearing for Mill River Lift Station assessment.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. On to announcements. Counsel, anyone with announcements?
I have a couple.
Thank you.
From the Coeur d'Alene Public Library, the Seed Saver Project is a seed swap project that was set up to encourage urban agriculture with seeds and plant varieties that do well in North Idaho. This is really a fascinating project because there's only certain varieties that have to be grown in order to produce that type of a plant, and so there's a library of seeds there. There is an experienced gardener at the library on Tuesdays until the end of May, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., to provide advice. So if you want more information on the Seed Saver Project, call the library at 769-2315. And also on the library, there is a program called Keep the Reading Habit Blossoming at the Seagrave Children's Library. Programs are offered May 6 through the 30th, and they will be, oh, there's just more information at 769-2315.
Anyone else have any? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would just like to say that this past Saturday, I was at the American Legion Post 14, and I was there representing you and the council to supervise the new flag raising and the new dedication of their space there. And that was great. It was good to be with the veterans, and hopefully you read about it in the paper, I think it was yesterday, and there should be more coming out in the paper, an article, I hope, talking about the veterans' dog tags at the old, that were on the old Freedom Tree, and how we're making efforts to return those dog tags to the veterans and/or their families. So you'll probably be reading about that in the paper. And also, hopefully, something's coming up. I discussed this with you, Mr. Mayor, about Memorial Day and some kind of service that we're going to have on Memorial Day, and I hope on Veterans Day as well, for the new Veterans Plaza out on the new McEwen Park.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Woody?
I have just a few. Weird, I have a few. Anyway, Robert Singletary, History of Coeur d'Alene, will be the 29th. This, it would have been this week, but he's been moved back to next week, 29th right here in the Coeur d'Alene Community Room, and he's doing the 1940s, so it should be kind of interesting because it's World War II and Farragut impact on our city. Pretty interesting. It's free, couple hours, runs from 6 to about 8? Or is it 7? 7 to 9, sorry. It's been a week or so since I've been there. It's really interesting, if you like, the history story. Tomorrow, at 5 o'clock in the old council building upstairs, is a skate park get-together. Bunch of the old skaters that are now old guys are getting a bunch, the kids, together, and they're kind of doing this rally thing to see where the skate park's going. There's some, there's talk of some grant money out there. So I encourage the kids, we keep stopping by the skate park and telling the kids to come and show some support, and that's, Obie is running that, and Steve, and a bunch of the parks guys will be there. So that'll be kind of interesting to kind of get caught up on what the plan is for skate park improvements. The other thing, oh, McEwen Park, after all this. McEwen Park dedication is Saturday, that's 24th at 11 o'clock. It's going to be open. The areas that are still dirt and growing will be fenced, but there's going to be a dedication ceremony. Steve, I think you're going to be there, and some of the old council people that were around. There's free food afterwards, and I have nothing to do with that. They made me tell you, do not say anything about food. So it should be fun. It'll, I think Mike Kennedy's going to be the ceremony guy, and he's always got a good chuckle or two. So if you're not doing anything Saturday, 11 o'clock till about 2 o'clock, come on down and be the first ones to walk on the park and get down on the Harbor House. Restrooms will be done. I think the only thing that's not going to be done is the grass will be growing, so we'll be watching the grass grow on McEwen. That's all I have, Mayor.
So Woody, would you be considered an old skater?
Oh, yeah. I'm really an old skater. I was still with steel wheels. That's how old I am.
I did, I just have a few announcements. I always like to acknowledge state champions, and Lake City High School and Coeur d'Alene High School competed in the Track and Field State Championships in Boise over the weekend. And we, I would like to acknowledge some of the young people that won state titles. Being a state champion is a special thing. And from Lake City High School in the 400 meters, we had Jerry Louis McGee. From Lake City High School, Scott Cummings was a state champion in the pole vault. Lake City was state champions in the four-by-400 relay. That would be Nathan Newby, Jerry Louis McGee, Jake Finney, and Tanner Horton. They were also the champions in the four-by-200 relay. We've got some really fast kids at Lake City. That team was Jerry Louis McGee, Nathan Newby, Ricky McCaw, and Chris Baker. Lake City had a champion in both the 100 and 200 meters in Madison Ward. And Coeur d'Alene High School, Kaitlyn Gunnerson, was the champion in the 100-meter hurdles. So I always want to recognize our state champions. A lot of work goes into becoming a state champion, so congratulations to those young adults. And then we will move on to Troy with our administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and residents of Coeur d'Alene. Thank you for your patience. There has been a lot of activity down along Front Avenue, and there's even more activity at the Third Street Boat Launch today than there has been. City of Coeur d'Alene is redoing the pavement that is going into the ramp. We apologize that we are pushing so hard to get this done prior to Memorial Day. We will be out of there as a city team Thursday afternoon. There'll be about 300 tons of asphalt that's put in there. Thursday, the Blackwell Island Boat Ramp does open, so thank you boaters for working around us, and we promise you will enjoy the experience getting in there. We have some great news in recognition of Wes Somerton, Chief Criminal Deputy City Attorney, for an award that he received. Nick Lowry, your team at the Police Department continues to seek and get awards, and we'd like to recognize them for all that they have done. We have the firefighter Scott Dietrich was recognized during the EMS week as firefighter of the year. Congratulations to Scott. And our IT design administrator, he saves us large sums of money. He works very well to bring in our own software programs. He was recognized by his fellow employees and received a blue ribbon as a great employee having a positive attitude, and we thank Brandon for all he does. We have two recipients of executive masters in business administration at the City of Coeur d'Alene. Samantha in our legal department and Sean Home in our planning department, our recent graduates of the University of Idaho program. Sean was the graduate that was recognized and helped, the city helped pay for his tuition. Samantha did that on her own. Kudos to them for extending their educations. And if you see people like this out working on fire hydrants, they are actually authorized to do it, and we wanted to bring that to your attention. They are in there flushing them so as to move the water, confirm that we have the flows. The city water department, through these types of workers, will also test the pressure so that your fire department is comfortable, that it'll have the actual pressure we need at those fire hydrants. We will put that in the GIS system, and not only are we flushing them, we're painting them, and we're testing the velocity coming out of them. So please do not concern yourself if it looks like they know what they're doing. If not, give us a holler. We are challenged to find lifeguards, Mayor and council. We do not have the number that we would prefer at this point in time with the summer fast approaching, so if there's anyone out there that would like to work for the City of Coeur d'Alene and is a certified lifeguard, we would love to hear about you today. Anytime we can help little people become safer and make friends with police, we do it. The Police Department, in conjunction with Safe Kids of Cootney County, is helping promote safe bicycle riding habits, and the number one habit would be having that helmet on top of their noggin so that if they do tip over, they don't hurt that, and we're recognizing them with some stickers and other good things. City of Coeur d'Alene is taking technology seriously. We're partnering with iShoutOut so that when you come into McEwen Park, you will be able to have an app that would download on your smartphone and gain information about McEwen Park, about the art that is in the park, about some of its hours, possibly the history on the park. And this is a local company, iShoutOut, and they have come forward to say we would like to partner up. Our communications coordinator, Keith Erickson, is doing a great job and can show you on his smartphone what it does. So that will be up and running for our opening on Saturday. And as always, we have the mayor's hotline, and/or if you have any questions, please contact the city. You can contact us via the phone or via the internet at our website, and we'd be happy to respond and let you know what we're up to. And that would conclude the administrator's report.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to other business, we are looking to ratify the appointment of Mr. Troy Timison as interim city administrator and personnel officer. So we're looking for a motion for that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would move that the city move forward, or council recommend the ratification of Mr. Timison as our interim city administrator and personnel officer.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next part is I want to discuss amongst the council, the city administration recruitment options. I have had a discussion with Troy in regards to filling the position on a permanent basis and how we would go about that. Troy is interested in throwing his hat into the ring, is, and is very open to a open selection process, competing against anyone that may apply to the job. So one option would be in the July timeframe, that we open up the position for applications. In the August and September timeframe, we have interviews with those folks with the goal of, by October 1st, having our permanent city administrator in place. So that is option number one, one that I've discussed with Troy, and he is in favor of that. He's not afraid of competing with anyone for the position, which is a great thing. So I want to just get any council members' feedback on the process, and if they had any other ideas, if they supported that, if they had a different route to go, I'd certainly be interested in talking and hearing what anyone had to say. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly. I think that's an awesome idea. I have had many discussions with, with people in the community, as well as with staff and employees here at the city, and they agree with your approach in that when we, when we select a new officer, department head in the city, that oftentimes, you know, there'll be an internal promotion, and we'll just say, well, this is, you know, this is the person we're picking for the job. And we'll say, well, how do we know that this is the best person for the job? Well, we know them, and they know the, they know how things work. They've, you know, been with the city, they're familiar with us. But I think really to ratify that they are truly the best person for the job, if there was competition, say, from other people who came in, then we know it. We would actually be 100% sure that that person is the very best person for the job. So I agree 100%. I think this is a great idea.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, well, we will move forward on, on that, and we'll keep everyone updated on the process. As I said, we're going to start this in the July timeframe, hoping to have the position, we'll have the position filled by October 1st. So now we will move on to a public hearing. This is a legislative hearing, proposed annexation from County I to City C17, 2772 West Seltice Way. This will, I've been given the instructions, run like a quasi judicial hearing, so I wanted to see if there are any conflicts of interest amongst council. None being seen. I have a sign-up sheet that I have some names on it, of some people that are going to, that are going to testify tonight. So I have three names on this list as we go along. If there's anyone else that wishes to testify, we can certainly add your name to that. So we will have Tammy Stroud give the staff report.
Thank you. So this evening again, we are going to hear the request for the annexation for plus or minus 3.5, 3.85 acre parcel at 2772 West Seltice Way. The applicant for the request is Rivers Edge Apartments LLC, and they're requesting the C17 zoning district. So this is a site photo. This is a subject property here outlined in the yellow. The red line indicates the existing city limits line along Seltice Way. Just to give you a better idea, Atlas Road and I-90. And this is a closer view, an aerial photo of the site. You'll see there's some trees on there right now. Subject property located right here. So we will go through the four findings that are going to be required for this request for annexation. So the first finding, finding B8, that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. So the subject property is located in the transition area, which falls within the Spokane River District. And the subject property is right here. Again, this is our city boundary, and the dark line here is the Spokane River District boundary in the black. So the transition area says, these areas are where the, where the character of the neighborhood is in transition should be developed with care. The street network, the number of building lots, and the general land uses are expected to change greatly within the planning period. So I also have some significant policies in your staff report from the comprehensive plan that you may want to look at. And also in your staff report on page six are the characteristics of the Spokane River District and what they will be. The next finding, finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are, are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So staff comments are on pages eight and nine. We received comments from wastewater, water, stormwater, streets, fire, all providing information about what the existing facilities are on the site, and some information about some density increases and what that would trigger. The next finding, finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site do or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. This is a site photo looking south, and the subject property is located at the crest of a small hill, and it's relatively flat on top where the old office building had been located. The physical characteristics appear to be suitable for the request at this time, and the topography would not preclude development of the property. The property appears to be outside of the shoreline overlay district and the 100-year flood, flood zone. And this is another site photo looking west, and you can see the outline of a former Stimson Lumber Office Building and where it was located. It has been removed. Finding B11, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. So as far as the existing land uses, this is a subject property. It's currently vacant, and the area to the west and the south and the east, they're also vacant. Just to familiarize you with the area, this is where the Washington Trust Site is, which was annexed last year. To the north, the red indicates the commercial uses on the properties. Coeur d'Alene Honda's in this area, and there's some other commercial uses. And to the east is Riverstone, where we have some residential uses being built. As far as zoning, the applicant again is asking for a C17 zoning district, which is a commercial zone. This is the subject property. And to the north again is the commercial zoning district indicated in the red, commercial to the east and commercial to the west with the R12. As far as streets and how it impacts, Seltice Way, which served as the original interstate highway prior to the construction of I-90, has sufficient right-of-way width. The four-lane divided highway has limited access from the eastbound to the westbound lanes. There are two stop signs, controlled crossing points adjacent to the subject property that provide access between the east and west lanes. However, there is limited stacking space for vehicle storage, three vehicle max. The adjacent intersection of Atlas Road, Seltice Way is congested, is a congested intersection, especially during the AMPA- especially during the AMPM hour traffic periods. So again, the applicant is requesting the C-17 zoning district, and on page four of your staff report, I've included all the permitted uses by right for the C-17 zoning district. And that's all I have, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, I have a question. On one of these papers, you talk about the comprehensive plan, 2007 comprehensive plan map designates this subject property as transition. Is that correct?
That is correct. I also want to make a note that in the findings that you have, it said stable, established, which it is actually transition.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I know these things. Also, can you explain just for a minute, what does it mean? We have a big chunk of property here on the mill, and I was under the assumption that it would probably all come into the city as one big chunk, and I don't know how many acres there are. And what we have is we have a little chunk coming in. What would have had to happen if we wanted a big chunk to come in, and we wanted to master plan that and say, here's kind of what we want to do here? I mean, do we have the authority to do that?
I don't know if Mike could answer that question better. I know that the applicant can probably provide some information about the history and how he purchased that small section out of the larger piece of the Stimson property. I don't have that information, but they could probably answer that.
Okay.
So a city does have the power to force annex property, and that's what it would be, would be doing it without the owner's permission, I guess, or we could go to Stimson and ask, do you want to come in? Part of the problem is, for the remainder of the property, part of the problem is the railroad runs through it, and they don't necessarily want to come in. But one of the big items in any annexation are the annexation fees. And so if somebody were to annex that voluntarily, they would have annexation fees. You know, I guess since I've been here, I don't recall a time when the city has forced a property owner to annex their property. We have that power, but I think it's limited.
I didn't imply that we should force annex, that I was just referring to some kind of an overreaching plan, because what I see is I see this portion here, and then the rest of it's close to the river, which means something else is going to happen there. And we don't know. I mean, we talk about in our findings, you know, compatible uses with the surrounding area, and we don't know, which makes it difficult. I noticed in the minutes from the planning and zoning meeting, they talked about a special use permit to R-34.
That's correct. When the application came in, the applicant requested an R-34 special use permit with the annexation request. The R-34 zoning district increases the density to 34 units per acre. So I did bring some information to provide some quick math. If by right, 17 units per acre in the multifamily zoning district would allow for 67 units if zone C-17. The applicant had an approved, or does have an approved special use permit for the R-34 zoning district. That would allow the applicant to propose 131 units on the site.
Okay, so, and we don't have to do that part in our annexation, but that's what's going to happen?
The special use permit was approved, so the applicant does have the ability to construct his apartment complex or multifamily building with up to 131 units.
Bless you. So, and when you were, I was writing something when you were talking about the traffic, and what did you say about the traffic during the peak hours?
Well, I didn't provide any peak hour information under the street department's comments. I believe I just spoke to it being, let's see, four-lane median highway primarily under the jurisdiction of both Coeur d'Alene and a small portion under the jurisdiction of Post Falls Highway District. Access and improvements and requirements will be addressed when the property does develop. And participation in a signalization of the adjacent Atlas Road and Seltice Way intersection may be a component of any annexation agreement that deals with this subject property.
Okay. Was anything mentioned about sidewalks, or would that be a question for the applicant?
We did have a brief discussion, and Gordon Dobler was going to attend our planning commission meeting, or actually a workshop, but we postponed it to discuss sidewalks on Seltice Way and at this time, what the plan was for that. And I don't believe that they have any improvements planned for this time.
Okay. I think that's all I have for Tammy. Oh, is the, we talked about the sewer surcharge, and I know that's coming up in the hearing that we just set. Is that going to apply per unit to this annexation?
I believe it is, and I also wanted you to know that when we do any annexation, we do have a pre-development meeting or even more than one with the applicant to provide this information with all of the staff that commented in the staff report. They also come to that meeting with the applicant, so we can provide that information to them in advance.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Tammy? Okay, thank you. We will open up the public testimony portion of this. Now, we do have some time set aside for the applicant, so if the applicant would like to come up. So Renata will swear you in.
Since it's treated as a quasi judicial hearing, I'm going to swear you in this evening. Do solemnly swear to tell, the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Kimball, and my work address is 2528 North Sullivan, Spokane Valley, Washington. Let's see here. There we go. All right. Wow. It's been a long time since I've been here. My name is Ray Kimball. I'm a civil engineer for Whipple Consulting Engineers. I've been doing land development engineering for the better part of 14 years here in North Idaho and eastern Washington. And I'm happy to say I'm finally back up in front of you guys. It's been a slow couple of years, and I haven't had a chance to get up here, but I'm glad to be here. So I'm here tonight with the owner of the project, Lance Douglas. And as you know, we're here requesting annexation and zoning of C-17. I can speak a little bit towards the land development side, but that's kind of a slippery slope on how we handle that, because of course, we're here for annexation and zoning. So I would like to describe the property a little bit, give you a little bit of background. Mr. Gook, and I think I can talk to you a little bit about why we're coming in. Of course, I don't know if you guys remember, this was part of the, there was a big Chesron master plan for this many, many years ago. And that was before all the money went away and the economy turned down. And so Washington Trust took their piece, and Stimson took back a chunk, and Mr. Douglas also ended up with two parcels, one of which was down by the river right at the end of Bella Reve, which has been annexed into the city. And this office piece is the other parcel. And so Stimson owns and controls the industrial property around it that is actually in the county. And as much as I would love to bring that to you and sit in front of you and do a master plan, we're not quite there yet, and I don't think Stimson is quite there yet, although I have heard rumblings within the community that it will be coming forward. And I certainly hope, we all certainly hope that it does, because that's the part of the city that, at least in my view, certainly should be, or part of, I actually view it as in the city. I've lived here all my life, and I've always thought of that as in City of Coeur d'Alene, and I think it should be. So to that end, we are required by city code and state code to justify our request for annexation based on the comprehensive plan, compatibility with adjacent uses, and availability of public infrastructure. So I'll start with the infrastructure part. We do, we agree with the staff report. Water and sewer are both adjacent to the property in Seltice Way. Any required upgrades to any of that infrastructure, as is consistent with all development, will be the responsibility of the developer, and we completely agree to that. So obviously, any upgrades will depend on any density and how it develops, and so that will be something that is determined at the time it develops. With regards to traffic in Seltice Way, Seltice Way is an arterial. As many of us know, it's Old Highway 10. And I think one of the most important things that we can do to improve that as part of our property as it develops is that is to include turn pockets as necessary to make sure that any turning movements to and from the property are safe. And that's a very, very important thing. And again, that'll also happen with regards to, you know, at the time of development, we'll make sure that whatever happens, whatever improvements we do, both our frontage improvements, which will include a multimodal path across our frontage, and any frontage improvements as required by city staff by the transportation master plan, and whatever else is required. Make it safe, period. We have to make it safe. And so we're committed to doing that, and we agree with the staff report in providing that. With regards to the comprehensive plan and our conformance, and the conformance of this annexation to the comprehensive plan, we believe we're consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, and more specifically, the River District. A C-17 zoning allows for a mixture of commercial and residential uses. C-17 uses, C-17 allows and hits the target densities, and also allows for pockets of higher density, which is supported by the comprehensive plan and the River District. C-17 development is urban in nature, which is a requirement of the comp plan, as is the C-17 development will be less in scale and intensity to that in the downtown core. Also, the C-17 development will include frontage improvements, of which will, as I mentioned earlier, require, include a multimodal pathway across the frontage. And that's in conformance with the city's pathway master plan. With regards to water, sewer, and transportation, the facilities are available and adequate for the proposed uses, and that's a requirement of the comprehensive plan. And that topography is also suitable for development. We've done, we've got a topographic survey, and obviously, there was a one-point office building there, and there's, which was a development, and there's plenty of room for future development under C-17 zoning. The reason I brought this map up is that I wanted to kind of point out that the parts of the city around this property are C-17. And I would fully expect that any annexation of the Stimson property would also be 17. And when I say that, I say it because I ask myself, what would be the wrong thing to put there? Would, so would R-12 be the right thing to put on an arterial right there on a three-and-a-half acre parcel? No. Would R-1, R-17, light manufacturing? No. Actually, C-17 is the right thing to put there. It allows the correct commercial uses. It allows the multitude of uses, and it's the right thing for this annexation. In closing, we believe that the proposed annexation meets requirements of city code and the comprehensive plan, and we're requesting approval of the annexation and adopting the findings and conclusions B-1 through B-11 as recommended by the planning commission, finding that, finding B-8, that the proposal is in conformance with the comp plan policies, that public facilities are available and adequate, the physical characteristics of the site are suitable for development, and that this proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhoods. And with that, I would ask your support and stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ray? Wood?
Ray, you used the term multipath and pathway. Is that like a sidewalk?
Multimodal pathway is...
Would you say multimodo?
Modal. So walking, biking, that kind of thing.
Okay. So it's like a sidewalk?
Uh, yeah, of sorts. 10-foot wide asphalt path, that kind of thing.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that, where does the pathway go to and where does it come from?
That's a good question. So it goes across our frontage. The City of Coeur d'Alene Transportation Master Plan has improvements for Seltice Way slated, I think, in the next several years. I'd have to defer to Gordon with the exact timing on that.
2018.
Okay.
Yeah. So is this, you mentioned, you kind of hinted at the fact that you might know what's going to be around this in the rest of the old mill site. Would that pathway then go from something that might be put in in the future then? Are you not party to that?
I'm not party to that. I don't know. But what I do know is that the city transportation master plan, as well as the pathway master plan, requires it. And so development, land development on those parcels, when they come into the city, will have a pathway.
You also mentioned that you talked about the thing that would go there. You said C-17 is the right thing that would go there. And C-17, in my mind, is just, it's a zone. There's lots of things that can go into a C-17 zone. So I agree with you that a C-17 zone makes sense there. But the thing is really what goes in the zone. So, just something I wrote down.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ray? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have, the next step is, we do have 10 minutes allotted if they wish to take it for an opponent. And I have one person that is listed as an opposition. Susan, would you like to take that slot?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Susan Snidderker, City of Coeur d'Alene. I want to address the issue of compatibility, because I think that's something that really is germane regarding this annexation, this project. If you, the height above average terrain is a term that is used in regard to this property, and I'll tell you why. This height is 35 feet above the average terrain, meaning the property in front of it is 35 feet lower. The project is approved for 131 feet ultimately. So think about that. That's height. Earlier, Mr. Kimball, I mentioned this at the prior hearing, and there was mention that you wouldn't see it from the freeway. Huh? Kathy Sims' building is in the, more or less in the freeway. The freeway is submerged, and also 95-foot pine trees don't really count. What I want you to do is, I want you to look and tell me what direction determines views and vistas. Is the view and vista from the north looking south? Is it from the east looking west? Is it from the west looking east? Or do the people on the river have a view and vista, a view and vista as well? Do they have view and vista rights? Do the City of Coeur d'Alene people in the City of Coeur d'Alene will be looking at a building way up there, could be five stories, if in fact, they do build a building, five stories, above, looming large. I don't consider this to be compatible with adjacent properties. But the city has to decide and has to determine what actually construes, what actually of view and vista consists of. What determination, before you make the determination that, gee, this is fine for R-17 or C-17 in this area, they can go so many feet. There isn't anything around it right now. Well, there is across the street with Kathy Sims' Honda. She has sidewalks, true sidewalks, by the way, mandated by the city. You have to determine if this is in fact compatible. And remember, this is like... And remember, this is like, this is like, picture an anthill with a house on an anthill. Does that give you some, some perspective as far as height goes? But before you approve this, you have to determine the true direction for views and vistas, and is it for just a few people, or is it for all the people? Is it applicable for one direction or another, whether that be east, west, north, or south? That's why I'm, that's why I'm my opposition. Thank you.
Any questions for Susan? Susan, I think that Dan has a question.
Yes.
I have a question for Ms. Snedeker.
Oops.
Hi. Suzie, you bring up some good points. The thing I'm having here is, this is an annexation and zoning, and we don't know what's going on there. I mean, I don't know...
That's right, but C-17 gives you an allowable height.
So, so from your perspective, what we need to consider is the height of that box in which something can be constructed?
Well, but, but you're not addressing the special use permit that's already been granted to that parcel.
What does it...
So I don't know where that ties in. I wasn't really too sure why it wasn't part of this, part of this, part of this notice, but it wasn't.
So...
Because it came in earlier. I mean, you saw it, didn't you, Amy?
So if, if I'm, if, if we're considering this as a C-17, and our findings are, we're talking about, you know, utilities, physical characteristics...
Right.
And surrounding neighborhood, which one of those is your concern?
Well, pardon me, but I believe the comprehensive plan also addresses views and vistas. Does it not?
Mm-hmm.
My point.
Okay.
So it wasn't in the staff report, doesn't mean it isn't something that you shouldn't address, in my opinion.
Well, you brought it up.
In my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Do we have any other, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I'll need to get signed up on the list here.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Chet Gady. I live in the City of Coeur d'Alene. I didn't come here prepared to speak today, so bear with me. I just, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Mill River Property Owners Association, and I've just been appointed to the city's brand-new subcommittee on the Spokane River Corridor development. And so, I have some concerns about this property, and I, I think Mr. Gookin was hitting on my concerns. We're going to have a path there that's tied to nothing. We're going to have property there that we don't know what it's going to be used for. I think if my understanding is correct, when the council approved the annexation of the Washington Trust property at the other end of this great big wide area, they did that contingent upon a PUD. The PUD could come into you, and then you could see what was going to be on that property. And I thought that was a very wise move, because we have a bunch of little parts here, so there's no way of telling whether these, this property is going to be compatible with other uses. The waterfront down there is part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for waterfront development for the city, for the use of the city. It's a target. I think that's the right term, waterfront target, in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. There are two proposed bike paths in the Park and Recreation Master Plan that run to the south of this property. How does all this get hooked in? You have a transportation master plan that's going to be built in 2018, is what I'm hearing now. How does that fit in? So, I understand the need for the developer to annex. I also think the city has a very important need to make sure that this is compatible. We just heard some testimony about this house on top of an anthill. I thought that was a great analogy. So what's it going to look like? What is it going to be? How can you determine whether or not it is compatible? If you do a similar thing that you did to the Washington Trust property and approve the annexation, looking for a PUD, I think you still have the ability to do some sort of control, or, control's a bad word, to ensure the compatibility that everyone wants in that neighborhood. So I would encourage you, if you do do that, put some sideboards on it so that you can ensure this compatibility with the rest of the neighborhood, that we don't know what it's going to look like. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I just have one. So you live in Mill River?
I do.
Were you around in the beginning of Mill River by chance?
I was not. It attracted me here, because I like it.
And as I remember, when we annexed that, it was somewhat the same. We trusted the developer to hit the numbers. We couldn't see what it was going to be. No sidewalks, right? None along the highway there. And now with that infill of apartments going in there, it's changed, but it still fit the zoning. So I kind of see your point, but how can an island, which is where I kind of look at that, how can an island conform to what's around it if it's the first development? Do you follow that kind of thought?
That is correct, and the city just formed a subcommittee to come and advise you on this whole area. So, what you're really buying is some time, if you would approve it contingent upon a PUD. You're buying some flexibility, because now, the use by right for C-17 is sort of a use by right for PUD, which is varied rights within an island. And those rights can change, gives the developer more flexibility, but it also takes away his, these are the 37 things listed that I can do in C-17, and not have any, anybody oppose that for any reason. So I think because this is early in the game for this Spokane River development, because the city has expressed so much anticipation for good things for the city being in there, that I think the longer you can hold off deciding it is compatible, which is what you would be deciding today, that anything that's C-17 would be compatible, the better it would be for the city.
So you're saying that the new committee, I understood the committee was going to be looking at the railroad right-of-way, if we get it, because we don't, and, and below that, to the river. River frontage was your focus.
My understanding was the whole development of that vacant property from Mill River out, I mean, from Riverstone out to Mill River, and it was not, I did not hear anything restricted it to areas south of the railroad.
And you're saying, so you guys go all the way to Seltis?
I think so, because the Parks Master Plan also has a requirement for parks to be built in conjunction with development of people. We didn't hear any of that here. And this pay, oh, it's only small, so it's only a fraction of the thousand people that would trigger that. But if you did a whole bunch of small things, you'd have no parks. So you have to coordinate all of this, and, and that's really what I'm asking for, is a coordinated development of this whole area. Coordinated not only with the city's beachfront property, but also with Seltis development. I mean, getting across Seltis right now is a nightmare. I mean, if you want to, if you want to pull out of there and go to, heavens forbid, Post Falls, that's a terrible thing. I mean, it's hard to do. So, you may have to look at intersections, and I just think that granting a whole bunch of by-right options at this point is premature.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Okay. The applicant will have some time now for summation, if he chooses.
Ray Kimball, for the record. First, I think I'll talk to Ms. Snedeker's comments with regards to the height. I think she quoted 131 feet. That's not correct.
I'm sorry.
It's less than half that, and well below the height of the existing trees there. With regards to views and vistas, like I said earlier, I lived here all my life. I know what the view and vista was 15 years ago of that property, and it was not nearly what it is now, and not nearly what it will be tomorrow. And so, I would submit to you that the view and vista, both from that property and looking at that property, is only getting better. And I, I didn't, I didn't catch the gentleman's last name with regards to the Spokane River Land use with regards, and requiring this to be a PUD to restrict, or so you have some sort of idea of what's going there. Well, we've actually already submitted a special use permit and received approval of a special use permit for a project that we would like to do. And so, I, I really, really don't think a PUD there really does anybody any benefit. It's 3.85 acres. Woody, as you pointed out, it is kind of, you can kind of look at it as an island, it's a little peninsula poking into the county. Stimson owns the surrounding property, and as we all know, Stimson is a fairly large company. They have a lot of land holdings, and they don't necessarily, their business is processing trees, and growing trees, and producing lumber, not necessarily real estate deals. So it may come in soon. Hopefully, it does. We certainly hope it does, that we think it'll be an asset to the city, and that any development in that area will be fantastic. But there's also no guarantee. And so, what we're here tonight to talk about is, should this property be in the City of Coeur d'Alene? And if so, what is, what is a proper zoning? And so, we believe that we've made the case that it should be in the City of Coeur d'Alene. It's in the comprehensive plan, and it's, and that C-17 is consistent with the surrounding zonings, it's consistent with the surrounding land uses, especially those land uses within the city, the commercial across the street with the residential just down the road with the commercial in Riverstone, and that it meets the requirements of the transportation, or the, all of the master plans, the comprehensive plans, and that it should be in the city and it should be C-17.
Any questions for Ray? Thank you. Thanks. We will now close the public testimony, and now we will be looking for council action. Dan?
I have some questions for Tammy, if she could come forward. Thank you. So Suzie Snedeker mentioned the special use permit. Why aren't we considering the special use permit when we're talking about this annexation?
The special use permit is only required to go to Planning Commission, and then once they approve it, that's where it stops, and then the annexation is moved forward to you. As additional information on that, should the annexation not be approved, then the special use permit is no longer valid.
Okay. And Chet mentioned a PUD for the entire lot, and my guess is, we can't talk about a PUD for the big piece there because it's not in the city. Is that, is that true, or why aren't we talking PUD up here?
As far as this area outside, or just the subject property?
Well, either.
Okay. We're only talking about the annexation of this because this applicant has come forward requesting it. This is outside the city limits, and we don't have an applicant that's come forward to request it. As far as the plan unit development, I'm not sure that that would, you know, get you what you're really asking for. The plan unit development is a vehicle that developers can use to modify or request deviations to setbacks, heights, road standards, sidewalks on one side or both sides. So if this developer isn't asking for those things, then it would just be a standard, you know, development. In this case, and I don't want to get into too much detail about the special use permit, they asked for the density increase of R-34. The C-17 zoning district allows multifamily, and you would go by the R-17 regulations. R-17 would allow for 17 units per acre. When they obtain the approval of the R-34, that allows for 34 units per acre. The other difference is, C-17 zoning district by right doesn't have a height limit for the commercial uses. When you're doing multifamily, it diverts you to the R-17 zoning district, which requires a 45-foot height limit for a multifamily project. Since they obtained a special use permit, that bumps the height up to 63 feet. So, the main point is, in a C-17 zoning district for a commercial zone, there is no height limit. It's when doing multifamily that you're tied to the limit on the height.
But yet, when we're discussing this annexation, we have to talk about it in C-17 terms?
Correct.
Okay, and this is a question for you, and maybe Mr. Gridley can answer this too. So one of the considerations, one of the findings we need to make is about the surrounding neighborhood with regards to neighborhood character or existing land uses. And the surrounding neighborhood is, I believe, zoned industrial?
That's correct.
And traditionally, in the city, we don't put residential next to industrial?
Well, again, the comprehensive plan states that this area is in transition, and the significant policies are in your staff report talking about that. And Spokane River District tomorrow on Page 6 talks about this area is going through a multitude of changes, and this trend will continue for many years. Generally, the Spokane River District is envisioned to be a mixed-use neighborhood consisting of housing, commercial rental, retail, and service activities that embrace the aesthetics of the proximity to the Spokane River, and so on. And then the characteristics of the Spokane River District are also listed.
And speaking of the Seltis as it stands now, do you know, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, what kind of services do we have out there?
As far as...
Gas station, grocery store?
I don't believe there are any in that area, probably not until you get onto Northwest Boulevard, or the west end of Seltis Way into Post Falls.
Okay.
Probably Highway 41 area.
Any other questions for Tammy? While we have her? Thank you. Okay. Looking for some action from the council. Wood?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for acceptance of a 314 zoning in conjunction with annexation of 3.85-acre parcel at 2772 West Seltis Way. Direct staff to do the findings and accept the information from the Planning Commission's meeting.
So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Wood?
Well, this is kind of a no-brainer. Somebody's got to be first. I'm sort of grateful it's not another urban renewal district, so I'm supporting this. Somebody's going to put up the money and start off something like this. I think you have to start somewhere, you guys. you guys, and this is a good beginning. These guys will do something. They'll create some homes. I think all the work that the new Parks Committee will do will only enhance all they do in the rest of this. Somebody's got to go first and get it a kickstart to the rest of this industrial property, because I don't think it'll stay industrial very long.
Okay. Any other discussion? Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that I agree with Woody. It's, you know, definitely is a conundrum with it being, you know, broken up. But how long do we wait? My dad always told me, wait's what broke the bridge. You bring up great points, Susie. You bring up great points, Chet. But these guys are ready to go. They've applied for the special use permit. Your, your views and vistas are below the tree line. And, you know, I can't, I can't think of, you know, you're not a riverfront property, and it's, it's probably going to be piecemeal even with a PUD with the other, the Washington Trust property. So it's, this is years and years and years, and this is something that's stimulating the economy right now. So I can't think of a, we've got the Seltice Way improvements coming in, and it's, you know, a lot of stuff goes in and then gets torn up and then gets reconnected. It's happened, happened all through the Ed Corridor project. It's happened down here. It's, you know, in this economy, I just, yeah, I would like to see them come in and have it all be one big project, but that's, that's not the case.
Thank you. Kiki?
I just want to make sure I understand Woody's motion in that the conditions that were imposed from planning and zoning, that the sewer study will be required, that will have to be done. Those are all part of the motion, so they remain with what we decide here, that they have to be completed. So that's a yes? I get that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Woody.
I was nodding quietly.
I couldn't hear your head roll there.
It's called the short, it's called the shortcut.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we've gone through some sewer issues out there, and it's growing really quickly. So I want to make sure that that's, and it sounds to me that that's, everybody's aware of that, and that that will definitely be the due diligence on that before anything comes out of the ground.
Remember, this, this basically lets them go forward now. The worker bees, our guys, start negotiating, and they will tell them all the things they have to do. And that sewer thing we talked about just last week will certainly step into this.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, this is a tough one, because I've gotten a lot of feedback from the public regarding Seltice, and it's, you know, becoming the forest of apartments. This, this annexation, though, it's not about, you know, the apartment. It's not about the building there. It's about the C-17. If we just look at it from C-17 coming into the area, yeah, it's compatible. It's across the street. Makes sense. I do have concerns. I'm kind of disappointed that, that the city didn't take a more proactive role in trying to create a sense of space on Seltice, because Seltice has just kind of happened. It's just kind of done it. And, and therefore, like I said, there, where's the services? We're putting a lot of people down a road, and there's nothing there for them. There's no gas station. There's no, there's no grocery store. There's no convenience store. There's no place to go. We're not making a place. We're making a, just a corridor of houses and, and apartments mostly. I have concerns about the traffic congestion for finding B-11, and if the zoning is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of density. For C-17, which is all we're considering tonight, yeah, it's fine. For R-34, no, it's not. But we're not talking about R-34. We're talking about C-17, because the special use permit is already done. It's water under the bridge. So if I just look at it and say C-17, yeah, sure, we could put something there. And I agree with Steve. There's, you know, unfortunately, what, what was a very large, beautiful piece of property that could have been master planned and brought into the city and been a place, a destination, it's going to come in like little pieces, like a puzzle. And I don't know what kind of situation that's going to create in the future. But again, looking at what we have before us, we're talking, bring it in C-17. And if you just look at it from that picture, there's no objection. I do have one thing I'd like to do, so I'd like to make a motion to amend. I would like to make a motion to amend, and let me know if this is okay or not, to require the applicant to put in sidewalks. Is that, do we do that at this point?
You could include that as a condition that we could discuss at the annexation agreement stage. And I think one of the issues I hear coming from you guys is this connectivity, and is this, does this connect anything? And I think staff is dealing with that at some level. But you can certainly require that that be looked at as a condition of annexation and in the annexation agreement, or require the sidewalks be put in, or whatever you think is appropriate. And we can negotiate that with the developer.
Would that be something that you guys are just, you've mentioned that this is an ongoing conversation. Is that something that could come up and then come back to us without me making a motion? Or would you rather have the motion?
Well, I'm not totally conversant with our trail master plan and what's being required, and I don't know what engineering has a vision for connecting to the Prairie Trail in Riverstone or to Centennial Trail. So I don't know if, probably best to make a motion to include some level of connectivity or sidewalks, or however you want to put it for this development to adjoining or adjacent developments makes sense.
Great. Then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like my motion to stand that I would like the annexation agreement to include connectivity with sidewalks.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay. Wood?
So it's real obvious to probably all of us up here. We've talked about the connectivity with sidewalks, because we just came from a place where, because there was nothing developed within 450 feet, you didn't need sidewalks. And yet Kathy Sims, out in the middle of nowhere, has sidewalks far from 450 feet from everywhere else. I think it's a sticking spot for at least me, and I think Kike, that it just doesn't seem right. You have to plan that this is all going to infill. So if you let one piece go in without sidewalks or connectivity, whatever you're going to call it, it doesn't make sense to come back later. But we are. We're coming back later on taxpayers' nickel to do those two hotels at the corner of Northwest Boulevard and 90, what is that, Northwest Boulevard, and the swale there. And it just, it seems odd to us to have, luckily, we got grant money, but it still didn't seem right. So I think most of us are focused on not letting that happen anymore. You develop, you put in sidewalks, especially commercial. Come on. Seltice Way, I don't ever see it necessarily as a, a strolling street, but if they keep building apartments, and it could, I guess. But I'm going to support you on, at least let's talk about it. I'm fine with a path. You know, I see that around Coeur d'Alene Place. The sidewalks are kind of like these asphalt things that multi-pat, multipurpose. So I'll support it, because I think it's worth at least making sure these guys have to have something across there, because Seltice will be a connection for paths or sidewalks.
I think that's good instruction, Woody, because the challenge, as you pointed out, this is an island, and we don't know what's going to come in. And it would be a shame to put concrete down today that doesn't match up with whatever is going to come in next to the island. I think what we're hearing is there is momentum to develop as adjoining property in some fashion, maybe not tomorrow, but certainly in, in the near future. And so there are times when developments come in that we take money or promises to build infrastructure, and we can certainly do that and hold the money or hold a bond so that it does get built and it matches up with what's coming next door down, down the road.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. I think Dan's motion would be an amendment to Woody's motion.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Guys are getting kind of complicated here.
Oh, we have just begun.
Stickler for the rules.
Okay. So we have any other discussion here? Renata, can you tell me what we have before us?
So you have a motion to approve the annexation and zoning and negotiate the annexation agreement and the necessary findings in order, and require the conditions from the Planning Commission. Then you have a motion to amend the motion that still needs a vote to see if that will be carried forward before your vote on the motion to approve the annexation, et cetera, et cetera.
So would you like a vote on the motion to amend?
Yes, please.
So would you like, would you like a roll call vote?
No, thank you.
We would just like a yea or nay. Okay. So on the amendment, do we have all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, Renata, we have Woody's motion, amended motion, and a second. I'll ask just one more time. Any further discussion? No discussion seen. Then roll call.
Mick Evers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. We will move on now to an amendment to Municipal Code 1705-1010 and 1705-1210 respectively, request for below-grade residential units in the NC and CC zoning districts. And we will have, I have a sheet here that no one has signed up on. If there's anyone wishing to sign up, I would need to have you come forward and sign up before you testify. And I will have a staff report by Tammy Stroud again.
Thank you. So I'll give you a little bit of information about the neighborhood, neighborhood commercial and community commercial zoning districts. They were adopted in 2007. They are small-scale commercial zones neighboring commercial nodes, so they will be able to provide services, as Dan had mentioned, needing these in certain areas. So when we looked at that code, we realized that they allow for ground-level residential uses with that commercial or lower-scale commercial use. But it doesn't allow for below-grade residential uses. So this amendment is really just to modify the code to allow below-grade uses. Say you've got an apartment, and then you also want to have on that main level your commercial use. So.
Any questions for Tammy?
You go ahead and ask.
No, I don't have any.
I got to ask you. So are we talking a basement here?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to see if you guys were following.
Okay, okay. So these, these small nodes that you have, little linkling out there?
Yes.
I love the idea of a node. So I want to build a node, and I want to put a grocery store, a convenience store, but I want to have an apartment underneath it. Is that the idea?
Well, you probably wouldn't be able to build a commercial, a grocery store. They're kind of a lower-scale commercial uses such as retail. You've got some retail, personal service, commercial and professional office, medical, dental. And then there are also design standards that are going to be required with these. We've got a few of them through town, throughout town, but they are geared to blend into the residential neighborhoods so that they're not obviously a large-scale commercial use.
Get that, Wood?
Yeah. Did you answer my question? So that was a no? You can't put a basement under a grocery store?
Yes, you could.
If it's a zone.
If it, oh, okay. Small, a grocery store, small, you know, convenience store. Okay, got it.
Any other questions for Tammy? Okay, thank you. Get some goofy up here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to move that, oh, wait, no, we have to have a hearing, don't we?
One more, one more time, I need to ask if there's open
Sorry, jump with the gun.
Public comment, if there's anyone wishing to have public comment. No one's going to do that, so we will close public comment. Feel free now, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council adopt the amendment to Municipal Code 1705-1010 and 1705-1210, request for below-grade residential units in the NC and CC zoning districts.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I met with the, with Sean, and I asked him, because I was at home trying to research this, and I just, I could not find, using my home computer and the city's map, which is a great service, by the way, any of these zones. So Sean had to point them out, and there's like three of them in the city, and they're really tiny. They're very tiny. In fact, we just did a rezone for one of them a couple of years ago. It's the massage place that's up on government. And so this is, this is not really a big part of the city, but it's just this special zone. And I think that was, this was, was it Hinshaw who came into town and talked about the place creating and all that, and he was the one who recommended this type of zone. So we're just, we're trying to create these mixed-use type zones, and this just, this just fits into it. I mean, it just, it makes sense. It seems kind of a, an oversight that we didn't include it in the first place, that we could have a commercial on the first floor and then residential above, but we couldn't have, like, it down below in the basement. Say if it was a home, like, you know, a business, a walk-up business, therapy or something like that, that they couldn't rent out their basement. So this pretty much just fixes that. So I'm all in favor of it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Renata, would you like to read the title?
Yes, sir. This is Council Bill Number 14-1010, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, amending Sections 17.05.1010 and 17.05.1210, to allow residential uses in the community commercial and neighborhood commercial zones, except on the ground floor, providing repealing of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing the publication of a summary, and providing an effective date.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mick Evers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mick Evers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Do we have a motion to enter into executive session?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we enter into executive session provided by Idaho Code 67-2345-1 subsection F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion seen. Roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Mick Evers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Go into executive session.